I think we should just sit right in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a question actually before we move forward. Can I ask, are there minutes here?
No, the minutes have not been completed yet, so.
So, in reviewing the bills we set just now, I noticed that there was a significant bill to Jensen there discussing the town administrator's contract with the selector-chair. None of us were involved in that dialogue, Madam, can you explain that?
Yes. When we were on the town, we had an executive session that was on the agenda with Christine, and her contract is part of that agenda, and it's, she's been working without an agenda, and so it's, I mean, without a contract, and I wanted that to protect us in town, we needed to do that.
Kathy, were you aware of this?
I was, but I'm not aware of any contracts that's been drawn.
Well, there's seventeen hundred and forty-three dollars that went into the establishment of a new contract, and when I was out of town, that wasn't a topic that was shared and going to be discussed on an agenda, clearly I would like to be a part of that conversation.
It has not been settled, is it?
Of part of the initial conversation, my respect, when you told me that certain items were going to be discussed at that, I would clearly have put off that conversation until I was present. Out of respect for the three of us with equal authority at this table, I find it very disrespectful that I was not, that not only was it not shared with me, nor brought to my attention after the fact, until I see it here in a bill for seven two hundred dollars, when we always talk about when I travel, if there's certain things that are important, we wait to another meeting, get it? You chose to do that without me, I think it's very disrespectful for the equal authority that we all have sitting at this table.
Who vote for Lawrence?
I won't sign it.
Who vote for municipal and school board? Severely. Law paper? The minutes will be taken up as we discuss the process for correcting meeting minutes on the United States.
And Madam, can you, whenever you're asking for motion, can you always ask just to get in the routine for?
I'll oppose.
Thank you.
I oppose.
Okay, so I can your hand go up?
Sorry. The next board meeting will be Thursday, May 2nd, at twenty-four, at 5:30, at the Town Hall. Business item one. The fire department. Request to put vehicle out to bid. John, how long ago?
Just go to the table, that's all right.
As you know.
I'm sorry. I'm joined.
Sorry, I didn't see. How long ago did you?
So, we had a fire station in the week, it was a 2005, our unit was purchased used, it went out and was fitted to be a brush truck with a water tank and a pump. Then the suspension was modified to compensate for the extra weight of the water. The vehicle has really not been utilized a whole lot in the last few years, it's pretty limited as far as getting down the four wheeler trails that we have here in town, and with so many side by side vehicles, and then other departments in the area, it just doesn't get called for that much. What's happened in the recent past is the pump that is built onto the truck has given up, it doesn't work anymore, and the suspension that was modified to handle the weight has also given up. So at this point, we would, we would like to put that vehicle out to bid and get rid of that. The vehicle itself, as far as just being a Jeep, is still in good condition, and we would like to take the profit from the Jeep and purchase a skin tank, which is a water tank and pump to go onto the back of our pickup truck. The brush equipment has already gone onto our pickup truck now, so the truck would kind of have a double, a double purpose at this point.
So it's time for you to use circles to inform the people?
Yes, that's what I would like it to do.
What's life expectancy of the pickup truck?
The pickup truck has a few more years, it is a 2000, but the nice thing about the tank that we are going to hopefully get for it is it will go right into the back of any pickup truck that we were to purchase in the future.
Do you have any thought about worth of the 2005 versus cost of the vehicle?
So it looks like it's fairly even, just the one, I did, I did go online and look out the Jeep itself, and average price paid for that vehicle is around seventy-eight hundred dollars. A quick search on Marketplace, you know, I saw 2010 with a hundred and forty thousand miles, I was asking nine thousand. Ours is a, ours is a 2005 with thirty-six thousand miles on it, no rust on it or anything like that, so I would say any, any of them on there, it all had no over a hundred thousand miles, worth for sale for between five and twelve thousand. We have some Jeep freaks at the fire station that claim that the thing would bring in the area of ten thousand. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I would think the minimum bid would be sufficient somewhere between seven and eight thousand.
Seal bid? Yes?
Well, the, yeah.
Minimum bid, but sealed bid after that, right?
And then some of the skin tanks that I've looked at are between seven and ten thousand dollars, so.
Fairly close.
Yeah, yep.
So you, what do you think, the minimum bid would be?
Can you vote for me?
Yeah, probably at least.
Seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Maybe, yeah, exactly.
For thirty-eight thousand miles?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six, yeah, that's, do you have a starting point that we could, for when we go out to bid?
Probably eight, nine thousand. And if we don't get any bites, then obviously we would redirect the bid, but I don't know if there'd be an issue.
So if you said eight or nine?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah.
Well, I think we should have a bid attraction and get people to put in.
Oh, I think there's, there'd be plenty of, plenty of bites.
So if you say eight thousand, you're gonna have people bid higher because?
Minimize eight.
Yeah, because.
Well, supposedly this model is fairly rare at this point in this condition, and they are, they are sought after.
Right.
I'm not a Jeep person, but like you said, we have a couple guys that are really into them, so.
Well, I propose we have a minimum bid of eight thousand dollars, and all submissions will be a sealed bid.
I agree with that.
Is there a motion?
It is. My seconded. Law paper, any further discussion? Any law paper? And then Jonathan, because again, you come.
Just ask all those people.
And I appreciate that. I'm getting, I'm getting corrected.
He's trying to damage.
And post. Our parliamentarian is teaching me good manners. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they bids behind.
Yes. Been looking for a Jeep?
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, so, business item two is, is a discussion of options for assessment administration. We had some information that was presented earlier, and we have some other, some other information that's been developed this week. As well as, do you have the Westport thing that you had brought?
So, I didn't bring that back, but I did speak with Westport, and they were amenable to a collective approach, should we go down that path, they're not looking for a full-time position, they're, what they'd like to do is hire an assessing person to prepare them for their revaluation process, get them on site and acclimated to the town, and then go into a revaluation process.
I think one of the first things we need to discover, because we've been, we've been discussing terms rather loosely, first thing is, do we want an assessor, or do we want an assessing agent? Mike, what do you, would you explicate what the difference between the two positions are?
An agent is literally a bilateral contract, where the individual represents the three of you as the assessor, the elected assessors, and that agent could be a private contractor. All that agent, if they qualify with the IRS, and M&amp;A is comfortable with their qualification to act as an independent contractor, then they can do that. Otherwise, they wouldn't need to be a town employee, and as a refresher, years ago, Ron was hired as an independent contractor, and the IRS stepped back at the town of West Happ and said, no. So with Fraser, by the power of license shore, the IRS accepts that we are private contractors, I, it's just as is within the federal tax code.
Correct.
Ronnie clearly was a surveyor, self-employed individual, as a highly competent professional, but the IRS said no, because he wasn't advertising his performance as an assessor or CMA to be hired by other communities in addition to this one. And they negated it.
So what was the first, so the second one is qualified with the IRS as being an independent or private contractor, your first one was what?
An employee, whereby I would, I would anticipate that you would want someone who's a certified mid-assessor, or able to attain that through testing within a year is difficult.
My, my.
A seated assessor would be the last possibility.
The major difference between an independent contractor and an employee, as, as I'm aware, is whether or not you use, as I as a contractor, if I'm using the town's equipment, I have appointed hours, office here, then I'm an employee for the IRS.
Not necessarily no. If, if I, if the private contractor retains the primary responsibility, meaning the reasonable criteria is set, i.e. we go to commitment such, such a time each year, April 1st is critical to the out of, right? No, they're not automatically an employee, however, I, they, I must provide my own independent error and omission, if anyone is employed by me, I must cover him, I'm not a family member. I must cover them under MIMIC, that insurance comes from me, I am not covered by your tort, even though I'm contractually your agent, your tort does not extend me as private contractor. As an employee, all of those things are part of their employment.
Is, and Ron was an agent?
He was, and employee.
And, and an employee, and what would the difference between an agent and an assessor be?
A seated assessor is the buzzword that you would hear.
Seated?
Seated, S-E-A-T-E-D.
Yes.
They take the oath to be the invincible assessor. You would take the oath to be overseers of the poor and selectmen, but you would omit taking the oath to be the invincible assessors. And when they're seated, it doesn't mean they have to be forty hours, or thirty-five hours, or ten hours, but they take the oath and the full responsibility to be the seated assessor, and that is typically as an employee, but it could also be as a private contractor.
And the question I had about an assessor, so if we had an assessor, just an assessor, and, and we got out of the business of assessing.
So they're seated, they take the oath.
And we'd take the oath back. So what happens if a town taxpayer has a question about their tax bill?
The difference between me as a private contractor as an agent, and Justin as a seated assessor, I cannot sign documents relevant to a warrant, I give written recommendation of, account, I'm a contractor, written recommendation of what you should do, you deny the abatement, you approve the abatement, I draft all paperwork, but it must be your signature.
Right.
A seated assessor has full signature authority to task the tax collector to collect, I don't, seated assessor does. Is that a good way to explain it?
And does the seated assessor prepare commitment?
Yes, yes, and most independent contractors do. It is incredibly rare to have a CMA refuse to take a town into commitment, it's virtually unheard of.
So people know what we're facing, what we're into, what would your recommendation be of the two?
For a community our size, I think a forty hour, or thirty-five hour, or whatever, a full-time, yeah, quotes around that, is I'm needed here for assessing, and you might find a retired person, fully competent, to be a seated assessor, and interested in a part-time position, and if you're lucky, they'll like, many of us in this room, and they're on Medicare, and they're not having to pay for their insurance, but you might find a retired individual. I would sincerely doubt that there is a whole of individuals who would want to have the responsibility to be, taking the oath to be a full assessor on a part-time basis, but that's just my impression.
So, I actually, I think we're, we're in two different positions here, we have a very short-term specific need to address our current maintenance situation, and that's been presented as a very difficult candidate to come in and accept that, I'll say, responsibility to fix. So I actually reached out to Ron and asked him if he would consider coming back on a very specific timeframe to address the properties that he knows and has worked with, and can help bring us back to a stabilized valuation for those that have concerns. He said he would very much consider it. So I look at that as a short-term fix for a very specified timeframe, then that, I'll say, clears the deck for the obstacle that may be before us in trying to hire someone that is scared of coming to this community based upon the situation we have before us, and I think that may be a solution, short-term, and then we find, at the same simultaneous time, source the long-term position, which was not discussed with Ron, it was specifically, would you consider helping us in this current predicament? And I think that's a great opportunity for us to address what we have before us today.
I'm very concerned that discussion of Ron at this time is a personality issue.
I don't consider that a personality issue, I consider it an opportunity for us to consider a cap, what do you think Kathy?
I don't, he's not an employee, so much more how it's a personality issue.
Because we have past, we have past records, we know him as an employee.
Right, but we're just talking about considering him to come back.
As a temporary placement?
My concern is that, that some of the errors that have been, that have been prevalent, go back as far as Ron's job as, as an employee, and therefore I would prefer him to discuss this briefly.
I, well, I disagree with that, and I think this is a solution for us to move forward, and I'm not asking Ron to look at the history of the town, I'm looking at Ron to address the forty-nine or so abatements sitting before us that we don't have, the necessary means or the information to address our town's abatement request and give them confidence when there's a blanket approach, which Ron was not involved in, saying everything's deep water, that was not a wrong decision.
And if I may offer one more thought along the lines of what Suzanne has expressed, you have administrative funds under administrative budget, certainly whoever the individual might be, you could hire a competent individual as a consultant, not an independent contractor.
As a consultant.
As a consultant for a fixed, short-term project, you would probably want M&amp;A legal to say that what I'm saying is adequate. But that would be, to follow up on that thought, as a very fixed timeframe consultant for a specific project, not paid out of payroll, but paid out of the administrative budget that you have twenty thousand dollars on the F.
Well, and to, Terry, to go beyond that a little bit further, and I appreciate that input, based upon the conversation yesterday, and I believe the chair stated that she's also on board with a legal consequence on behalf of Parker, I don't have the disposition to offer them one more cent on behalf of this community for during a turnaround and sue them, so I think that any future work from Parker should not be considered, and we certainly have now a solution with someone who does know the town that provides that as an opportunity.
I wasn't suggesting powerful appraisal as a consultant.
No, 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 I just wanted to say.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that we had a discussion yesterday at the abatement meeting that all three of us felt that it was necessary to pursue legal action against Parker, and I know they've been in queue for future work, and I think we needed to negate that plan and move forward with something else.
This is actually a different agenda item, so I don't, if you wanted to be that item.
Well, it kind of falls in there.
There may be some money available to help us up.
That's what I'm saying, so we have it, we have an allocation that I don't think should go to Parker, and should go to somewhere else, I think this is a terrific solution for us to consider.
Let's take that up under, under three.
But we're on assessing agents right now, so that's really number two.
We're talking about administration, and this was suggested last week. As a, as a plan-making item on the agenda, so let's do one thing at a time so that we don't get confused, Mike.
A little bit, you can, I think of it as two separate problems, the getting going with 2024 and getting up 2023, field work is relatively simple, it doesn't involve, it does a little bit of grade, but that's probably going to be a problem, no matter who, who you have doing, so you can separate the two a little bit, and, and take care of the, and part of it, part of doing the field work is something that could be done by town staff, you normally, and I'm not sure how you are planning to handle it, but there is some packaging to go into field work that is pretty much straight administrative, and don't need to go. And it's somewhat better because you don't, the work is concrete for going out on the road, it's usually more than.
Yes.
In the office.
Well, it's generally an insured individual going out on these properties.
Oh, they are carrying their own.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean, they're carrying.
Mostly all of it.
Yeah, yeah, so, not necessary for tonight, but, but there is a way to do a little more parsing.
That's what Suzanne says, there's two, there's two problems, one is the immediate with having insufficient information to act on those abatement requests, and the other is getting ready for commitment within this ten frame.
Well, I think one's, one's to the need for today, and one's our plan beyond commitment on how we're going to address the next nine years before our next revaluation, and, and I think we're trying to figure out how we address the needs on whatever schedule that happens to be for the West Bath residents, so when they can come in to Town Hall and discuss their valuation, and, and feel confident in the information that they've been given. So I think that we've got one now, and one that's really, I'll say, beyond commitment, and what we want to do for the next nine years.
I just have a quick question, the workbook that was supposed to be provided to the town with all of the numbers that you could make sense of the revaluation information on the tax cards, whoever it is, Ronnie, or whoever, whomever else that would be, would need that, has that been provided yet, and has not? So even though Ronnie knows the town, he wouldn't be able to make sense of the numbers without that workbook, correct?
He might be, he might be able to, so I'm sure it depends, it's a loaded question. One of the questions, a key question I had in yesterday's evaluation of the abatements was that the base lot on every submission was all over the map, I saw one that had point one six acre, that in a collective approach to an individual acre had a value of over three million dollars, I don't know that any one acre in West Bath is worth three million dollars, so I don't know how to address that, when we, the book does have a base lot calculation for improved and unapproved in the certain, I'll say neighborhoods, which we also don't have, but, so, that, and that, and some of those things, I, we go back to what Michael Hennessy said, talking about, you know, a straight, an administrative piece, where we may have people that can go out and do permitting, I think what we need to really establish the neighborhoods, because not everyone was deep water, and each lot, and certainly what I learned from this revaluation is that any waterfront review should be done at low tide, we ask them to do everything, you look at summer cottages during the summer, I think we need to also say any waterfront should be done at low tide to reveal the actual accessibility, certainly a painful element learned, but I think that that's something that we could do from an administrative perspective to help Ronnie, or whomever, establish neighborhoods based upon what they photograph, I think an administrative person can go and photograph and share what it looks like, but it'll come back into the town to really almost map the property maps on each parcel, what, what is it, is it Title III, Title II, whatever, and I think that's what we need to do, and in theory, which is also, it comes down to the definitions, which are part of the Parker appraisal contract, they were not included, I think that would then create the definition of Title II, we come up with what that is, and that goes a path forward in perpetuity for the town, because I don't think global warming, while we're all aligned, shouldn't be going to change much for how that landscape looks.
Well, to answer your question a little more directly, Parker did provide a manual filled with numbers, but they did not provide any justification for any number that was in there, therefore, if one is trying to say, oh, here are some other sales now, do we need to adjust these numbers, well, you have no idea where the number came from, it could be from some other country, it could be out of this head, there's no justification, and no definitions, it's hard use.
So to come back to the options, going forward, we'll take the Ron thing separately. I think one of the things that we need to do before we set out to say what kind of things we want from the. from the assessor, aside from all the legal stuff, is are we going to have an agent or an assessor?
I think it should be an assessor. And I think it should be a seated assessor so that they can act on, as, on behalf of the community with a full license. The question is, how much time do we need them? And what, and what will be a sufficient relationship for both of us? For both the new person and what we'd like to pay for it? And that I don't know the answer to.
And this is important to know, which is why I've been kind of hammering on assessor versus agent. Because if you are interested in posing a seated assessor, the town will need to bone on that change. So if you would like it to be on this year's town warrant, time is pretty short. So that's an important decision to make.
I also would be in favor of a seated assessor as it's become very clear that none of us at this table have full knowledge of the assessing process or how to do it. And I think we have caused enough harm to these residents. And we need to move forward in the correct, most professional, knowledgeable manner that we can.
I completely agree with that. So then the question is, so I move that we set this as we are going to pursue a seated assessor on behalf of the West Bath community with a timeframe to be established. I don't know whether it's 30 hours a week, 20 hours a week. I don't know. But I think we need to pursue a seated assessor.
I think we would have to put it in broad words, 20 to 30 hours a week and then see what we get for a pool and what they're able to do. I don't think we can say 20, 30, 40 because we don't know who we're going to get for a pool. We may get someone who could do 20, who's really good, someone else who wants to do 40, but they have no prior, you know.
I agree with that. So I'll amend that. I move that we pursue an assessor with a timeframe of 20 to 30 hours per weekend to the West Bath community.
I'm cautious about 20.
We have a motion.
We don't have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it and then we can have discussion.
We need to, first off, we need to amend so that it's clear that we're looking for a seated assessor.
That was her original motion. Yeah.
Right. And the parameter for 20 hours?
We said between 20 and 30.
We, in the past, we, for long term, not talking short term at this point. For long term, Ron did the job. Did he have eight hours a day, two days? Let's see.
It's Tuesdays and Thursdays.
But I think we also.
He has two to six hour days.
Naturely, so if you have someone who's willing to do four hours in the evening or.
Or we can, I mean, wherever they, we, we're, that, that position has complete flexibility in when, oh, I shouldn't say complete. We do need them in front of our community on a set schedule, but they also can do some of this. And even evening hour, they need more beneficial to some of the residents. But it's something that is adjustable, that fits both of our needs.
I'm just thinking in order to get upon a warrant, we don't want to close it too tight.
I'm glad you brought up the warrant because I feel like that we're kind of running ahead of ourselves right here with this motion. I think it might be really helpful if you took it in smaller chunks. Like, I move to ask the town, you know, through the town meeting warrant, if they would like to change our structure to a seated assessor or something like that. And then finish that up and move on to what kind of description you think this person should have and whether they should be employed or contracted.
Because the, the big change in this is to remove the select board from the assessing business. And that's a big deal.
That's a big deal. And the town may or may not support that.
Right. I think after this year, they.
One inclination, I mean. Legal that can be done at a special term meeting or that needs to be done at our actual town meeting?
Which is May 16th.
That's the question.
Our actual town meeting is in November when we elect officers.
We can't wait that long.
David, do you have a, do you have a question about that? I mean, do you have a suggestion about the difference between the budget? I know you know the difference.
I'm just talking about statute wise.
Right, the statute.
I'm not sure, not sure.
Okay.
I almost think we can do it at the May town meeting, but I'm not positive.
I think, I think so too.
If we, if the town authorizes the position, it doesn't mean that we immediately have to fill it.
Not.
Right, right.
That's whatever.
Right. But it would be, it would be taking the select board out of the assessing business, handing off that responsibility totally to the seated assessor.
For every day.
So I think the, I think if you would amend the, or withdraw the motion and make it to put on the warrants, the question of whether or not to have a seated assessor.
What's, why would we not want to add to that the timeframe for 20 to 30 hours a week and have it as one warrant item?
Because that, that.
Well, that doesn't need to be included in the warrant item. And the description for the position is separate.
But you said it didn't go down in the next line.
Right, but I just, I would like you to just deal with the warrant first, what we have to ask the legislative body to do.
Because if we tie ourselves to 10 to 20 hours and we have the most ingenious retired assessor come in and say, I can work seven, then we're tied to the timeframe. And I think that's better worked out with the candidates.
Yeah, because job descriptions or, or, you know, what you want a contractor to do can change at any time.
Okay, since we're having this discussion on it, you've had your turn, Mike. I'm going to call on Jay first.
Emma, could you not say hours negotiable, salary negotiable?
Yes, I think we could do that.
I covered you.
Yes. Now, now it's your turn, Mike.
I would avoid anything about hours because the discussion at town meeting will be about hours and not about.
Right.
Not about the changes.
Bring it in.
And just to follow up, I do disagree. A contract for an agent cannot be changed in lieu.
Well, I mean through negotiation.
A contract and agent is very clearly, it's bilateral. And they don't report through a town administrator. They don't report through a tax collector.
Right.
And it doesn't change in lieu.
No, I'm sorry. I was just suggesting that if the needs of the town change, a contract could be.
But a lot of towns have a town administrator who's also the assessor. And that's one full-time position. So you're right, there's a real variety everywhere. And that's quite popular.
But if we have a seated assessor, before we say, here's, here's your contract, we can say, how many hours are you available? How many hours do we need in the middle? However, the negotiations go.
We can say, when we put out the, whatever, the job description or an RFP or whatever, that salary hours are all negotiable. And then you can interview everybody and see what they want to give you.
Yeah, and what their experience is also.
Yeah, we can, we can, in the, looking at those various ads that I looked at over the weekend and this, the way in which we advertise for assessors or assessing agents is quite varied.
Oh, absolutely.
And so part of our task in the next few weeks is for us to come up with what it is that we want and what West Bath needs. And my proposal about that, when we get there, is that we would have a workshop where people could weigh in and say, I would like this and I would like that. And then we get to put all the good ideas together and come up with a, with a plan and a job description that's going to suit us going forward for the long term.
I believe we put $40,000 aside from the budget committee for this process, plus the 20.
That hasn't been gone in on yet by the board. That's a warrant.
I didn't say it was committed. I believe we put $40,000 from the budget committee, I think is what I said, for this position.
That's a recommendation.
Yes, and the town meeting always has the final word. So that we do not know until after town meeting what the town, if the town is willing to allocate that. And to see what sum is the usual wording. So I wouldn't say that that would be any different.
So Carly, what's the motion and it sits? The motion? Why you asked? You moved to pursue a seated assessor with a timeframe of 20 to 30 hours. So I'll frame that to pursue a seated assessor with a schedule to be, a schedule and a timeframe and pay scale to be negotiated as needed. Does your second still stand?
Yes. Do we have further discussion?
So it's not clear that we want this on the May.
I think it should be on the May. I think this should be.
Well, I just think it should be on the May too. I'm just stating that because our annual town meeting is held in November when we elect our officials, we want to make sure that we're doing this legally.
Yes.
So we should just double check with our legal counsel.
Which is why I'm glad we're talking about it tonight because there are several things that need to happen. And you'll be reviewing your warrant soon. So we need to talk to MMA, come up with a warrant article, make sure that you agree with the wording.
And if we can, then we need to discuss the special town meeting board. I don't think we can wait till.
I agree with that too. Right. So I guess ideally it's on the May 16th discussion. If not, we figure out what our next, soonest opportunity would be to bring that forward.
As a seated assessor. Now, the second question. The second question is now, I think, would it, since we touched the big picture, what are we going to do about the small picture, which is from now until a limited?
I move that we consider Ron a suitable alternate to address the current abatements set before us to help bring them to closure since we don't have the material from Parker to do so.
I'm going to second it so we can have discussion. I. I don't like discussing to the public.
Do you want an executive session?
I don't think this, he's not, he's a retired employee who are inviting back to come work on a set timeframe. It's, it's not a past employee situation. We're not talking about his, his, his position. We're offering him a future position.
If you were interviewing him, that would be done in executive session. I don't understand. I'm talking about a specific employee.
Not appropriate.
Is any different?
I think that it is not appropriate. Interviews are conducted in executive session. And before we, before we have anybody come in and. So can they talk about this without a name?
Absolutely.
Well, since the name is out there, it's hard to say.
Well, I think you could talk about what it would be like if you had somebody in for a short-term project like Suzanne was suggesting. You know, with somebody come in to, you know, take us through the abatement process and just deal with that piece. I think you could talk about theoretically whether or not that would work for you.
So now I'll change my motion. I move that we consider hiring an individual who has the capacity to address the current abatement criteria so that our residents feel that their values have been addressed.
When you say hiring, I apologize. But we're trying to be very specific. Are you talking about employing or contracting?
Temporary basis to address, I said specifically, the abatements. I'm not, I'm not talking about the timeframe. I'm talking about the word hiring.
A consultant.
To get a consultant to address specifically the abatements that we have at hand. No other information. But I'm trying to.
I don't have to review this.
But I think I said it earlier.
Yes, but.
It has, the motion has to be very specific.
Do you understand, does rest of the board understand that hiring isn't specific enough? It should be contracting or employing?
Or consulting.
Consult.
Is consulting?
Consulting is.
Contracting, contracting with a consultant. Or a specific project.
Or a project phase exclusive to the abatements.
Do you?
Uh, I do.
The board gets to deliberate before the public is in.
Are we ready?
Are we ready?
Carly, okay with that?
So the motion is to consider hiring a consultant for a project phase exclusive to abatements?
Exclusive to the current abatements that we have at hand.
I'll second it and then we can open your discussion.
So do we want to discuss? Why would that go beyond just the, the abatements from this revaluation? Because there's some, are there anyone's, are there more coming in, Christine? Are we?
No, we don't close on that.
And the current, that's perfect. The current abatements we have at hand is sufficient as a project.
Darlene's first, then David.
Understanding that you have sort of two different projects here, one cleaning up the abatements and two moving forward with the, with the abatements, then there's all of last year's work, then there's next year's work, right? So you really only, you really have three different sort of projects going on. Is it unreasonable to, for time's sake, advertise to hire an assessing agent contracted to start the work with the caveat that the town is looking to move forward at its town meeting to have a seated assessor and that they may or may not roll into that role? Does it need to actually be different people?
That is a question that I would defer to the people who are actually CMAs. My understanding is that the pool is not like vast.
Yeah.
And if I may, much of what is in front of you and I'm sat there and I compliment all three of you as soon as you did the struggle, which you struggled through it all over yesterday. I think it's very valid that for a consultant for that specific project, I know, there is no doubt to rely on. It needs to be from the gut with somebody who knows this town and this town's real estate because of the incredibly unique situation you're in with an incomplete revale dumped on you.
And I don't want to scare people off. I'm concerned about trying, I agree with your process, darling, but I don't want somebody to come here and be like, blah, and run through the hills because I think we're in that kind of predicament.
And if they don't recognize how dismal the lack of data is, they're not an especially competent assessor. From my perspective, I wouldn't want them in my employment. I would run for the hills. If they recognize that the data in that manual is just nothingness, they're not going to want to second to it because you have to ethically understand what is in front of people with their real estate. So I hear what Doreen is saying about that very limited project after what I observed yesterday. Thank you for letting me express that.
David.
Yeah, you've got to be upfront to let this person know it's, it's not a cave walk. And second thought is, would this person be following all the way through the commitment?
No, it's only for the, it's, well, right now it's said as a. No, it's only for the, it's, well, right now it's, it's said as a, is the abatements to get them addressed for the people that filed them. And, and then we have, the next case I think is, is the person that we plan to hire.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Make it a first date in general only, on both sides. Well, somebody who comes in to, to take a look at the abatements is, would know and probably possibly spread the word about the condition of the files. And there's no point in trying to sugarcoat this, because
We can't.
We, we want them to be honest and stay. I don't want to go through this again, because they've run away.
They find that person who really loves a project, that I have been in a position, as I'm sure others have, where the, where the truth of the position was not discussed beforehand. And it is bound to end in disaster.
I agree.
So, we've had enough of, I want some disasters, but I'll say issues. We've had enough issues, we need to get them cleared up. So, what, so we, to, what we're looking at is somebody to handle the abatements, and then, later on, have, have had the time to deal, to deal with our specifications, our job description, our requirements, and then sometime in between that time, hopefully maybe by the end of June, we would have either, depending on what the town decides at the meeting, we would either have the requirements that we have for an agent or a seated assessor. So either way, we have our specifications for who would, what requirements we have, so. But
Just background noise or invoke, whichever way you take it. As far as building permits, I started Buckfield as late as, late October, and it was done in November, literally fifteen days. And I didn't do the pricing. And what's her hat, she started on a weekend, she put the entire weekend on it, but it, it can be compressed as little as fifteen, twenty days.
And that also is an adjustable schedule for someone who wants to add it to the workload. It's a, it's a simple
And you may well, when we get to the next on the agenda, consider a consultant who really is focused on the abatements. And the data issues, a lot of people who are qualified with knowledge of buildings and technologies are out there and taking good photographs, including waterfront photographs. For the ones that are on, on, there. That's not the whole town, we pay a hundred and fifty for that.
Thousand.
But you, you might want two separate, and that should be the next one, so let me see. Okay. So we have the four's. The motion to Carly and Sophie, can you read one more time?
So, there's a motion to consider hiring a consultant for the project phase exclusive to current abatements.
I think if we take a consider, we would be contracting with a consultant. Would that work for you, Suzanne, if you read the motion?
I'm easy, right? That's what everybody says. I haven't been covered for old friend for that.
David?
Do you want to include in that how that, if legal, you want to place this on the May town meeting?
Well, that's a separate, we'll do that, we'll do that next. So, do we have any more discussion about the short-term consultation?
All in favor?
Wait, she's, whoop. So we said, so are we going to put this out?
Yes.
Okay, as a job.
It's not, not to bid, it's a job.
This is a job to hire a consultant.
Yeah. And we have, so we already have money allocated for this, I presume we can spend that against this without
Yes, we have, we have done for you.
Okay, yeah.
So, okay, so are we just wanting to No, no, you mean that's, clarity is all important. So what do you think? You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, all in favor of the motion as it stands? Raise your hand. And in opposed.
Alright.
I'm ready. Alright, I'm ready, good job. Thank you all. Okay. What we have next is our funding list. Take a look, take a look at, in between these, take a look at the variety of ways in which the job of assessor is being described, and, and there's another one that's more current. If you Google, how do I do it? Usable assessors, main, something like that, and you can get a bunch of them. There's one up that's more recent than either of these that has, that, in Farmington, which has absolutely gorgeous layout, very, very clear, very easy to read. So, processing invoices. So basically
Take it away.
Yeah, we do, I need to know, if you receive an invoice from Parker Appraisal, what would you like us to do with that invoice? How would you like us to follow up on it? We did receive one invoice that was created on March twenty-fifth, and the description they put on the invoice was assessment maintenance work from March eighth, March fifteenth, March eighteenth, and March nineteenth. And I know that they were not here doing assessment maintenance at that time. At least that's not how I would describe it.
So I think
They were reviewing abatements at that time. So this is actually for review of abatements, which they told me they would not charge the town for.
They shouldn't be sorry to be part of the contract.
So, I am not planning on paying
I don't think
I'm not planning on having Julie cut a check for this invoice.
So I have
I do know that if, that Jessica was here for one day doing pickup work, the annual maintenance for building permits. I do not have any information from when she was here. I don't know if she put anything into Trio, so I don't have any background information for that particular day. If we receive an invoice for that day, I'm planning on holding that as well, until we have the information of what they provided. Do you agree with that?
So I have, before before that, I, I'm a tad concerned, because I was very matter-of-fact asking what had been presented from Parker Appraisal, from our contract, and any invoices, and I was told there had, none had been received, and that was two weeks ago. And here we have a bill from the eighth, and you were very matter-of-fact saying no.
Well, this is March twenty-fifth. And, and I said, no, we didn't have any that we were paying.
No, you said, no, there were no invoices, and
That we're paying for.
No, that wasn't it.
Well, that's what I meant.
We are not going to have that level.
I am simply asking the Board
So I don't think we should
How you would like me to deal with invoices from Parker Appraisal?
I think everything that we have for Parker Appraisal on an outbound monetary value needs to put on hold until our town attorney determines the position that we're moving forward with, because we stated yesterday that we are going to pursue legal action. We should, they should not get one more penny out of us until that's been resolved.
That really wasn't a motion that was made at the meeting, it was just discussion. So if, if you're planning on taking legal action, it needs to be discussed again.
We have to have a motion.
I move that we pursue legal action against Parker Appraisal for failure to complete their committed contract with us.
I second that. I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to phrase that. In a way, I'm not advocating paying them one more penny. But what I'm saying is that legal action is, we may not be ready, we need to consult with our
That's what I'm saying.
Well, legal action is for
We don't have an attorney.
Mark Bauer. I, no, I actually
I already contacted Mark Bauer, which we discussed yesterday as well. So Mark Bauer, it happens to be on vacation, asleep, he will be back Monday. I'm sure I will have a conversation with him. I'm also concerned about the term legal action, because I think we need to consult with an attorney at this point. I don't know that we're taking actions.
So let me rephrase that, I'm, well, I'm, I'm not going to change it, we, we already got a motion, let's, let's
We have a seven?
She's a second. So, so just maybe, so I, I have some additional discussion. At this point, I don't think you're going to like what I'm going to say here.
I never do, Suzanne.
That's okay, I'm still going to say it. I don't think that, I'm not comfortable with you speaking with our town attorney right now with Parker Appraisal. I think that our, our town attorney needs to, and, and the new town attorney, because we don't have one right now, I don't think we should go, excuse me, I don't think we should move forward with this decision when our relationship with the attorney is scheduled to end June thirtieth. This is a bigger problem that we're not going to address in a very short timeframe, and I'm not comfortable, Christine, with you being involved in it at this time, because you've been very, very close with Parker Appraisal, and I don't want that to muddy any path forward. I want our town, the new town attorney, to have a clean slate to determine what they think our best, best path forward is.
So, are you suggesting that we don't consult with our attorney until we have somebody else on the retainer?
Absolutely, because it's not going to be resolved in six weeks.
But if Mark Bauer takes on the case, he's not going to drop it on June thirtieth. He can take a, take, he will take you through.
I, I think that whatever, whoever our town attorney is going to be path forward should be the person that represents us on all of our path forward, and not dabble in one case, and then represent us, and have somebody else represent us in some other situation. I think our next town attorney should manage this, because I don't think it's a short-term solution. It needs, there's going to be significant time, and I think our new town attorney should be the one who handles it.
If Mark Bauer initiates, this is what attorneys do, if they initiate
At our direction.
Who wants this? If they initiate any action of any sort, including writing a letter saying, where's, where's the data, turn over all your files from the town of West Bath, which is the first step. If he, if he does that, he will carry that through on that particular case, all the way through, because that's the way attorneys work.
Right, and I don't want to go with Jenson and Bear, because they've decided they don't want to work with us after June thirtieth, and I think that we should find the law firm that wants to represent West Bath in perpetuity, on anything we have before us, not just on a per case basis.
Wasn't stated that they didn't want to, it was that they were losing the attorney that's worked with us, and they did not have capacity?
Okay, then they shouldn't do this case.
What if we don't find another attorney of our job?
Then we just, you know lawsuits just don't go away. We've got two years statute of limitations to address this, I think we've got plenty of time to get involved.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking. Wait. One objective observation as well. We are anticipating that nobody will go before the Board of Assessment Review, but we don't know that. Mark Bauer is, in my thought, very competent to represent the Board of Assessment Review or the Appeals Board based on Jenson Barrett's retained records and awareness and knowledge of West Bath, and if they are sure staffed, that's something that is occasional, and we might well be interested in that. It would be a conflict of interest to have an individual pursuing defects in the completed revaluation advising the Board of Assessment Review. I can see that as potential built-in legal conflict that, and thank you for just letting me express that.
Yep.
I can see that. Twenty-five, yes, thank you.
I can see that. So, essentially, your motion is that we don't do anything
Parker Appraisal has not shown up for four requested meetings with us. At this point, I'm not confident that they're going to show up for anything else, or answer the letter that we send them. So I think that that's a moot point, trying to pursue conversation with them. I would rather our town attorney take it on when we have one, and make sure that they're in it for the long haul, that can represent us not only here, but any other situation that we have before the town.
I second that.
Was that a motion? Absolutely.
Oh, that Motion start with I move, there is a motion on the floor which the Board should have on purpose, that says, motion to pursue legal action for failure to fulfill contract. So you just want to change that?
I, I said motion, with our new town attorney, at the timeframe when we find them, who can handle all of our business path forward.
So you're amending your motion to say
To add to that.
To add. I'm concerned about the word actions.
Carly, you can wordsmith that, that you think is appropriate.
I can't, it's a motion.
It's a motion. So what, what word do you think would be better than action?
To seek recourse?
But legal action is a legitimate term, I believe. It's
It goes beyond
It kind of takes lawsuit.
It is a lawsuit!
It may be, it may not be. I think we need to let the attorney decide whether or not it's a lawsuit.
They do not know that we will need to sue.
Recourse is good, legal recourse.
I'm hoping to heaven that we don't have to sue.
I'm pretty confident that they're not going to give us any money back, and they're not going to give us our documents.
Well, I think that depends on a lawyer.
I'll second your motion.
Oh my God.
Do we have a discussion?
Is there a private discussion? All in favor of seeking legal recourse? All opposed?
So I, I don't, I don't remember, it's possible that you did, I don't remember you ever making a motion that we weren't going to pay any invoices, but I'm not planning on paying any invoices.
I move that any future request for money from Parker Appraisal be denied, and considered part of our recourse with the town attorney.
Perfect. Seconded. They, they can seek recourse. Okay.
We're going to need to vote on it.
Yeah, we
All in favor?
Second.
I was dreaming, I was dreaming.
All in favor?
I thought I said that already.
All in favor? Hell, we are All opposed?
Well, look, that's heavily involved.
Natural later subject, a bunch of it.
Steve, am I ready for this?
No, legal.
We're on legal.
I hope you're ready for anything, at any time.
All right. This is just a question about procedures.
Yeah.
An invoice has appeared. Does Christine have authority to simply pay that, or does any invoice like that need to be approved by the select?
I would like to address that, because I think a lot of people don't understand how it works. I do not typically see invoices when they come in at all. They go to the treasurer, the treasurer processes them without my knowledge. I bring the warrant to the meeting and have the select board sign it. So I want to be very clear that I do not get involved in processing invoices.
So, in that case, in effect, any invoice that comes in has to appear on the warrant and the select board votes on it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Then how did that invoice not show up on the warrant?
Because she only came into my office and said, here, have this. She didn't do that when we made the final payment on the revale.
It was, it was, it was an exceptional bill, so an exceptional process happened.
Darlene, can you explain what the warrant is exactly?
It's the list of the, the
Accounts payable.
The accounts payable?
So is it just like a table, or are
So is it just like a table or the checks there that need to be paid?
No, the bills are there, bills. And there's a summary on the cover.
Okay, so like the bills and all the descriptions and what the bills are for and all that.
Every individual list and then individual bills inside. Okay. Thank you. And a signature page. And I mean, sorry. And I read that couple. There's actually one I wrote on that one.
I don't know if this is the time or not, but here I go. I think a town manager or administrator should know and should see all the bills before they're sent to us. I think she should have knowledge or he should have knowledge of those. So I'm not sure that I care for this process.
I agree with that.
I don't agree with the process.
It's the process that has been in place.
Yes.
So we can change that process. But please, could we do that?
Yes. I agree with Kathy, because if I'm responsible for the budget, I need to be aware of what's being paid.
Well, I don't want this back and forth. You guys saw it. I didn't see it. We all should see it. We all should be aware of what we're signing on for. And it sounds like that's not happening.
Okay. And I would look at the town administrator to not put something on the warrant that did not meet...
You did not hear me, Suzanne. I do not put on a warrant.
I am making a comment, not... I'm saying in the future, I would expect the town administrator to have no... Nothing go on the warrant that wasn't substantiated with making sure that the purchasing guidelines, making sure we've qualified and hit every parameter set forth on how we process payments in this town.
I agree, and that's how it's described in my job description. I would like to have it handled that way.
Darlene, I just had one more clarification question. Before the invoice even comes in, where does the authorization for an expenditure come from? From who? Who author... So if you wanted to replace the tile on the floor before the contractor is contracted to do that, who gives the okay that the town's money can be used for that?
Comes before the board generally.
No, we don't see it that way. We see it after the fact.
Well, it depends how it's approved and where the money's coming from.
I can't hear you.
If the warrant says to see if the town will spend $592.76 on whatever, then the town has authorized that.
But it's after the fact. These, all these invoices have already been... The work has been completed.
I think she's talking about the warrant like at the meeting, right?
Right.
But I'm...
Right, but sometimes it's a big pot of money to use for something. Then who decides exactly what gets paid out of the pot of money?
It depends on what the nature of... We... If the bill comes in for paper, that's part of the office budget. It comes in for roads. It's not a special project. It's part of the roads budget.
But we see... The thing is, we see that invoice after the work has been done. So it's being committed and paid.
Yes, when you're approving it, when you're approving. And that's how it's supposed to be.
Eighty percent of the answer is in the process.
You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm asking? You know it.
But Steve?
For example, in the Parker invoice that we got, who along the way said, or did Parker say, "We will do X for you. It'll cost Y"? Did someone approve that to be done?
It was approved by the select board when I presented my plan for moving forward.
Except for the holdout.
In March 21st. I'm not...
Was it explicit? Was it... How explicitly was it in there? Was it Parker Appraisal will do such and such for X dollars?
No, not for X dollars.
So it's just Parker will do something and therefore Parker plump?
Well, it was specific to the spring pickup work. I'm assuming you're not talking about the revaluation.
I'm talking about that particular invoice.
Well, the particular invoice they should not have charged us for. That invoice, as far as I'm concerned, is void.
Well, the question is, was... You say that work was authorized?
Well, what I presented to the select board in March 21st would have allowed Parker Appraisal to do the spring maintenance work.
Right.
However, they have not done that, so...
My question is, how open-ended...
No, of course, there's no...
How open-ended is that kind of approval? It sounds fairly loose.
Well, it's whatever their hourly rate is.
But based upon, and they say we've got X amount of things to look at and here's our fee that it's going to be? I think it was the reverse of that. Here's the fee. I just did X amount of hours, which in theory, we've committed, they've done the work and now we are forced to commit to payment because the work has been completed without the authorization of this board.
Yeah, I think there should be more authorization, more explicit authorization.
Can we focus on what we're going to do going forward instead of what we did? That we know that we want to...
We're going to talk about this next.
Yes.
Yes, that's a nice...
It's not going on forever.
Yeah, but Adeline, I just note that you seem often to not want to go back in the history. People learn from history. They learn from mistakes. You get positive criticism. You should pay attention to history and not preclude conversations like that with the statements such as you've just made, because that precludes constructive, useful suggestions.
I agree with that.
What do you do?
I know the amount of the invoice because I did submit a freedom of access request. And I know it's $8,400. Isn't the purchasing policy $5,000?
Yes.
So when there is an invoice that exceeds $5,000...
Goes out to bed.
How does a town administrator under the proposed or current guidelines of talking about proposed, if it was an $800 invoice? To me, that is below the purchasing policy. But $8,400 for three days' worth of work on the document I received...
Should have been out to bed.
Exceeds that $5,000. And I understand the difference between an agenda warrant and the town meeting warrant. But generally, I'm confused. $8,400 for three days' worth of work? Where does that come... What slot does that fit in?
Well, it doesn't fit into any slot, which is why Julie said, "We can't pay this."
No, well, she didn't really say, "We can't pay this." She was like, "Well..."
This is a problem.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't supposed to be authorized. So she didn't have authorization to just write the check.
But it goes into, I think, also anything on purchasing policy over $5,000 requires us to go to bed. And Parker Appraisal should not be just the sole purveyor of that if it's going to be a $20,000 and over $5,000 increments in project.
This was supposed to be work on the review of the current requests for abatement.
Pickup work, which we allocated $20,000 for, if it's going to come in lots of $8,400 or whatever that happens to be, that should be a bid item. There's plenty of people that would do pickup work for $20,000.
Yeah, but you don't go to different people every time you have pickup work. You don't go out to bid for pickup work typically. And we've not done this before because we had an employee assessing agent. But typically, one person does it when you either consult or contract with a company year after year. It's not something I would think to go out to bid for.
But we were... The implication was that with that $20,000 when we put it in the budget was actually for an individual to be here on site. And I believe that would be why... Excuse me, I'm still...
I'm going to argue with that, because that is not what we're talking about.
My concern is, if this was for abatements and he hasn't met with us, we met with the people.
No, yeah, and it was for... He put maintenance work, but those are the days he was doing the maintenance, which he was not supposed to charge us for.
But Kathy, I just want clarification.
You and I were both confused on...
The $20,000?
Yes.
In the budget, a year and a half ago?
We had a different perspective than they did. So I don't think we really handed that... You and I thought something...
We thought something. That's what I'm saying. We both thought that we were hiring an individual to be here on site of town. And that apparently was not the interpretation that was meant.
Which is why, when Carly says, she... Translation, we need to make sure that what we have in the motion is absolutely clear. Let's not do that again. Mike?
Steve brings up a valid pothole in the procedures that they should resolve in the later date. Because had they done the work, you'd be screened out for exceeding your policy and you'd be screened out for not getting the work done, so... There's a problem there, and it needs to be fixed.
It is a process issue that needs to be fixed, for sure. Steve?
So back to this particular invoice. Who did Parker say, "I'm going to do this work"? How were they authorized to do this work?
In the information, in the proposal that we adopted on... What's the 21st?
March 21st.
We authorized Christine to contact them. That was for abatements and new construction. They didn't do the new construction. They barely did the abatements. So this is why we're saying, "No, we can't. We're not signing... We're not signing the warrant if that bill is in there."
Okay, so basically, you're saying this was not authorized because they are evidently not doing the work you authorized?
They promised me verbally, Steve. It's not in writing anywhere, but they promised me verbally that they would not be charging us for renewed the abatements. So that piece alone, I would refuse to pay for.
And I want you to know that you have a resounding nod from John B. Beck and Brooklyn.
I totally agree with you. Stand taller, John.
You're not a... Jane?
So is this another lesson? That everything we get from a contractor, potential employee, whatever, be put in writing?
In very clear, specific whatevers.
And the group review from our town attorney, when we get one, because we missed an opportunity to have legalese added to this contract.
However, they have clearly been violated. So we want to seek redwood. Item four. Which is now, since we have decided that we would seek recourse... Could somebody fill in the call?
With what?
Kind of like water, please.
Absolutely.
Maybe two.
Straight up.
No, we don't have any...
No on rocks?
We have no rocks.
No rocks.
Excepted. I have a hand in my head. Okay, item number four. The select board will review and discuss a draft request for proposals for legal services. This was tabled from the April 11th meeting to allow the select board time to review. So I move that we take this off the table for discussion and possible action. Do I have a second so we can do it?
I'm sorry. I went somewhere else. Second.
You didn't take me with you? Okay, thank you, Suzanne. So the motion is...
You're taking the item off the table.
To take the item off the table for discussion and possible action. For the discussion of the discussion. Okay, all in favor of taking this off the table? Okay.
All opposed?
All opposed. It's like, all aboard. Not get retained if it's in that group. Okay. So have we had an opportunity to look at this?
We have had it for quite some time. So I thought we were talking about having two separate legal parameters, one for ordinance and one for town work.
That was discussed. It has not been decided. So...
And I thought, I'm sorry, Suzanne, but in one of your previous motions when you were talking about legal, I thought you said that we were waiting until we have an attorney that can do everything for us. Did you mean specific to assessing or did you mean all of our needs?
No, I think we were having an attorney... We talked about doing one for the ordinances and one for town business. And I think we should wait... We have neither right now. So I think we should wait for the one for town business to address our potential lawsuit. And the other one, if you're working on the ordinances, that's where I think...
Okay, so more than one attorney?
Yes. One for legal business and one for ordinance.
Your... Yes. Your motion? Hold on. Motion?
Well, that wasn't... The motion was just to take it off the table.
No, I mean, in a previous... Was there a conversation? There was a motion when we were talking about...
That was specific to assessing. Just waiting until we have a law...
I thought she said...
A law to pursue legal action for failure to fulfill contract with new attorney.
We have discussed...
Legal recourse.
We have discussed, but there has been no motion. And Wendy, you're making a point.
An appeals board, be it ordinance appeal, a board of assessment review, but a quasi-judicial appeals board cannot have the same attorney that the municipal offices have. The decision and finding of facts that come from those quasi-judicial boards cannot... You can have the board with no legal representation or you can have the municipal offices with no legal representation. And you can bounce an attorney back and forth. We ran into that and I resigned as the chair of the Board of Assessment Review.
Yeah, it doesn't work out.
And you really would be on solid ground to simply bite the bullet, even if you have one budget line for legal services that gets divvied up. But have it separate.
I agree.
Thank you for letting me speak. And legally, you can't have one attorney represented. You can't do it.
We have Mark Bauer worked with the Assessment Review Board. Am I correct?
Right.
But he's in the same firm as our former town attorney. Who belongs municipal, more to a municipal... Yeah, town government.
Yes.
So that was two attorneys, one firm.
Yes, but not one attorney representing. It's really two separate legal functions.
Right.
They can't advise the quasi-judicial board at the same time they advise town government.
Otherwise...
Right. So they could be in the same firm, two different attorneys.
So I'm curious. You asked me, who did you do the legal work with for the contract for Christine?
Alyssa Tibbetts from Jensen Barrett.
He's from Jensen Barrett? Just curious. It's always a... It's always a passover. So I move that we have two separate law firms handle our work, one being municipal and one being ordinance.
It's all municipal.
Yeah, but ordinance and town business.
Quasi-judicial boards. Two.
The two separate firms specifically.
Why?
So one for ordinances and one for all other means forward. Correct.
Why not say they need separate firms?
Some have venerable...
We don't have a second yet. I'm not in favor of this, but I'll second it so we can have discussion, because I need more.
So I think that you have... Some firms are very proficient in ordinance work. And some are very proficient in other work. And we like to pursue the most capable representation for the town. And they don't have to be. I don't think they should be at the same firm.
Well, you just made a motion... Well, you just made a motion that said they have to be in separate firms.
I think they should be. And there's going to be, I think you're going to find a firm that is very proficient in one, and another firm that's very proficient in another, and I think it's, as this town evolves, we want to make sure, because there may be breakups within a firm that have to do another representation. So I think it's, I think we should have, I believe we should have two separate firms to do that.
I think you tie your hands too much. You can always split apart.
Darlene?
I see you, Jane. Darlene?
Yeah, I mean, I agree totally with Oneida, and this actually happened to us, the Planning Board is also semi-judicial board, and no?
I'll make a review.
I'm sorry, what? Only the Planning Board.
No, actually, it's...
No, the Planning Board is, yes, it is.
Board of Assessment, Review, Board of Appeals, and...
Right, there are three of them. So according to Sally, we had to have a different gentleman from, he's Adam Scott, I forget his name now. So, Jerome Parkinson. Yeah, Jerome Parkinson. He was there to help the Planning Board when we had a difficult application because it was looking like it was moving towards a legal battle, so we could not have Sally because if we did that, then Sally would not have been able to represent the town if the applicant had come forward with a legal battle. So I can say firsthand that it has to be two. And Sally had a gentleman who was not with her law firm because he has specialty in working with planning boards and Board of Appeals. So that's how that works, and I didn't realize either until we were in that situation. So I would propose the fact that you may find two people in the same firm that have specialties in either or, but in this instance, Sally was representing the town, the other gentleman was representing the Planning Board, as we knew, because it was just getting critical that that had to happen.
And the caveat is that the Planning Board individual, the attorney, went to Jansen and Bear, which created a third caveat.
Yeah, that was another thing, not to muddy the waters, but Sally chose him in particular because of his expertise working with planning boards and Board of Appeals and ordinances and that sort of thing. So I do agree exactly with what Oneida's saying, and there is a use for it that way. It just doesn't seem like there would be what there is.
I'm not convinced that we need two individual firms. If we can get one firm where, that has attorneys that can handle both, as we have had, both libs and municipal law. I just think it's easier to go with one firm. I'm sorry, I was thinking.
I know. I like that one. I remember, I don't think you should limit yourself by saying you have to have two firms, because this day and age, you might come upon a fabulous firm that's big enough that it can afford. And hopefully, whatever lawyer we use for the municipal activities will be willing and able to guide the town for a specialty if they might need one, whether it's in or out of their firm. So I think by defining your criteria more specifically, you at the same time are limiting yourself, and you should leave it as open as...